Here.
Ward, Wilson, Mayor Powell, President, call your wives.
Here. All right, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the minutes from the May 6th special meeting and the May 6th regular meeting. Got a motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Adoption of the agenda, do we have any changes to the agenda? A motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Visitors to be heard. Addressing the council, persons addressing the council should use the microphone at the podium. Please raise your hand to be recognized, go to the podium and state your name and address. For items not on the agenda, members of the public may speak under visitors to be heard on any topic not on the agenda. Remarks are limited to five minutes and no decision will be made at this time. For agenda items, public testimony will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item after the subject has been announced by the chair and explained by the staff. Any citizen who wishes to speak one time for five minutes on each agenda item. Public testimony will then be closed and the topic will be given to the governing body for possible action. At this point, only city council members and staff may discuss the current agenda item unless a council member moves to allow another person to speak and there is unanimous consent from the council. Questions from council members, however, may be directed at staff or member of the public through the presiding officer at any time. We have one proclamation for Poppy Day and Catherine.
Proclamation declaring May 23rd, 2019 as Poppy Day in Vermillion. Whereas, America is a land of freedom, preserved and protected willingly and freely by citizen soldiers, and whereas millions who have answered the call to arms have died on the field of battle. And whereas, a nation at peace must be reminded of the price of war and the debt owed to those who have died in war. And whereas, the red poppy has been designated as a symbol of sacrifice of lives in all wars, and whereas the American Legion Auxiliary has pledged to remind America annually of this debt through the distribution of the memorial flower. Now therefore, we, the governing body of the City of Vermillion, South Dakota, do hereby proclaim May 23rd, 2019, as Poppy Day in the City of Vermillion and the County of Clay, and we encourage the citizens of our community to pay tribute to those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of freedom by wearing the memorial poppy on this day, dated at Vermillion, South Dakota, this 20th day of May, 2019.
Thank you, Catherine. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to anything not on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll turn it to the council. Anything not on the agenda? All right. Moving on to public hearings. We have a public hearing for the renewal of retail on-off sale malt beverages and South Dakota farm wine licenses. Mike?
Applications for renewal of malt beverages has been received from establishments listed on the notice of hearing. The police chief prepared a report indicating the performance and when compliance checks were completed in each of the establishments since July 1, 2018. The city council has adopted an ordinance requiring a written management plan on reapplication for a license when convicted of violation of any laws, rules, regulations, or ordinance related to alcoholic beverages. The management plan was received from the following five businesses that failed compliance checks. We got Casey's Retail Company for the Princeton Street Store, Charcoal Lounge Inc. for Charcoal Lounge, the City of Vermillion for the Bluffs, NPC International for Pizza Hut, and Varsity Pub LLC for the varsity. It should be noted that D&amp;D Foods from the Hartford Steakhouse failed a compliance check on April 16th. A management plan will be required with the renewal of the retail wine license in November as the renewal application materials have already been sent out and furnished to them. The packet includes information regarding compliance checks on establishments listed. The city council has the ability to renew a license on basically two criteria, suitable person and suitable location. The city receives $150 for each on-off sale malt beverage licenses and businesses with video lottery, there's an additional fee of $50 per machine that's paid with the license. Following the input from the public hearing, the city council will be asked to determine if they want to renew or deny any of the licenses. If a motion is made to deny, the reason will need to be stated as the individual will not be able to reapply for one year. Should be noted that the Old Lumber Company Incorporated, for the Old Lumber Company at 11 Court and 15 Court, when that license was issued last year, they were in the process of acquiring the building at 11 Court, and it was contingent upon a final inspection by the building official for occupancy. They're still in process with that at this time, so if the motion to approve should be contingent upon expanding into 11 Court based upon final inspection of the building official. Do you want me to read through the list of licenses, or?
Just the names?
Yep, I can go. We had Bunions LLC for Bunions, Cafe Brulee Inc. for Cafe Brulee, Casey's Retail Company for their store on Jefferson Street and Princeton Street, Charcoal Lounge Inc. for Charcoal Lounge, we had Circle 13 LLC for the West Side Inn, City of Vermillion for the Bluffs Golf Course, City of Vermillion for the Municipal Liquor Store, Coyote Convenience Inc. for Coyote Convenience, D&amp;D Foods Inc. for the Hartford Steak Company Tavern, Dwight Iverson for Cherry Pit Stop, Fireworks Inc. for Dakota Brick House, Hy-Vee Food Stores Inc. for Hy-Vee, I-Mart Stores LLC for I-Mart Stores USA, John Donald Enterprises for Silk Road Cafe, Mexico Viejo Inc. for Mexico Viejo Mexican Restaurant, NPC International for Pizza Hut, Old Lumber Company Inc. for Old Lumber Company Bar and Grill, Prairie River Inc. for Our Pizza, Pumpin' Stuff of Vermillion for Pumpin' Stuff, Pumpin' Stuff Vermillion for Pumpin' Stuff Video Lottery Room Number Two, Red Steakhouse Inc. for Red Steakhouse, Sunset Oil for Lucky Seven Casino and the Sunset Casino, Valiant Vineyards for Valiant Vineyards, Varsity Pub LLC for the varsity, Vermillion Downtown Cultural Association for the Coyote Twin Theater and for the Vermillion Theater, Walmart Stores Inc. for the Walmart Supercenter on Princeton.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, turning it to the council. Got a motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next item is public hearing for the transfer of retail on-sale liquor license from Brian Engelmann to Backed Group LLC for 914 North Dakota Streets. And Mike?
Application was received for the transfer of the on-sale liquor license from Brian Engelmann to Backed Group LLC located at 914 North Dakota Street. The notice of hearing is included in the packet. This retail on-sale liquor license would be for the license period that would expire December 31st, 2019. City council has the ability to transfer a license on two criteria, suitable applicant and suitable location. As to suitable applicant, the city requires that they apply for and have background checks sent to the police chief. The two corporate officers, Eric Van Vorst and Brian Tuuker, stated that they have submitted the information to the FBI and DCI, but they have not been received by the chief of police. With respect to the location criteria, an on-sale license had been issued in the past at this location. The transfer fee is $150. Following input from the public hearing, the city council will be asked to make a decision on approval or denial of the transfer of the on-sale liquor license. I would recommend that as the background checks have not been received, that the public hearing be continued until June 3rd to allow time for the police chief to get them so we can have a report as to suitable applicant.
Okay. Seeing as we have no one in the audience, I'll turn it to the council. Any discussion?
Moved if we continue until June 2nd, 3rd.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor to continuing to the next city council meeting? Any opposed? Motion carries. Right. Item C, public hearing for special daily malt beverage and wine license for the South Dakota Shakespeare Festival on or about June 6th to 9th, 2019, at the Prentice Park Band Shaw. Mike?
The South Dakota Shakespeare Festival has submitted their application for the special daily malt beverage and wine license for their event in Prentice Park on June 6th to the 9th. Notice of hearing, diagram of the area along with a memo on control measures from the police chief are included in the packet. The police chief reported recommend parameters for the event. As the event is held on city property, the city council can include such conditions as restrictions if the governing body may deem appropriate. Since they're using city property, we've requested they have a release and indemnification, releasing the city from liability from the event, which they have provided. Also, we require, request a certificate of insurance naming the city as an additional insured with liquor liability, and that has not been received yet, but they were in the process of bidding out their insurance and said they would be, they were working on that and would have that. As noted in the police chief's memo, he recommended the council consider attaching conditions that risk bands be distributed by volunteers when IDs are checked to ensure purchases, purchasers and consumers are 21 years of age or over. The South Dakota Shakespeare Festival provide ushers who will monitor both the purchase area and the audience grounds within the area delineated by the hedge rows. Ushers will ensure no one removes beverage from the audience area where the fence concession area and that fences concession areas and audience areas will have posted signs instructing consumers not to remove alcoholic beverages from the two designated areas and the direct pathway between them. The city receives $20 per day and $15 for advertising. Administration recommend approval of the issuance of special daily malt beverage and wine license contingent upon receipt of certificate insurance naming the city as additional insured, and the council wants to consider the conditions that were recommended by the police chief.
Counsel? Tom?
Mike, do you know if this includes meed? No, okay, thank you. I move approval. With the stated condition by Mr. Carlson.
We have a motion and a second to approve the special daily malt beverage and wine license with conditions. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. More liquor. Item D is public hearing for a retail on-off sale malt beverage with South Dakota Farm Wine License for Patel LLC for Little Italy at 831 East Cherry for the period ending June 30th, 2019, and for renewal of the license for the period ending June 30th, 2020. Mike?
Applications are received for the retail on-off sale malt beverage with South Dakota Farm Wine for Patel Inc. for Little Italy's at 831 East Cherry. Notice of hearing and the police chief's report on the applicant are included in the packet. The on-sale license, the first one would expire June 30th, 2019, and then they're applying for the renewal that would expire June 30th, 2020, so I thought I'd put them both together instead of trying to include the renewal in the previous one when we haven't even issued a license yet. The city council has the ability to issue a license on basically two criteria, suitable applicant and suitable location. As to suitable applicant, the corporate officer of Patel LLC, Mr. Patel, had submitted the information for DCI and FBI background check. The DCI background check was received by the police chief and his memo states there's no information to preclude the issuance of the license. With respect to the location criteria, a malt beverage and a wine license have been previously issued at this location. The fee is $300 for each of the two licenses that they're applying for, the one ending June 30th and the other ending June 30th, one ending in June of 2019, the other in June of 2020. Following the input from the public hearing, council asked if they want to approve or deny the license for Patel LLC for Little Italy's at 830 East Cherry for the two licensing periods stated.
Counsel? We have a motion and a second to approve retail on-off sale, oops. Okay.
Do we need to ask for a condition also since we haven't received the report? And according to policemen, it's going, our police check, it's going to be a couple of weeks. If it came back negative, can we reverse this? Or should we wait?
This one did have the, he has received the report, didn't he?
No. It says it's going to take a couple of weeks from the one from the FBI. Am I looking at the right one for Mr. Patel?
The DCI background check was received by the police chief and his memo states there's no information to preclude the issuance of the license.
The FBI one can take six to eight weeks, and usually if that does come back with something, we'd bring it to the council.
Okay, so we can reverse it if we need to then?
Yeah.
Thank you, that's all.
Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second to issue a retail on-off sale malt beverage license for Patel LLC for the remainder of the 2019 period and then the entirety until June 30th of 2020. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item E, first reading of ordinance 1401, amending appendix A, 2012 joint zoning regulations for Clay County and the City of Vermillion. James?
Thank you. The city and county adopted in 2012 the joint jurisdictional zoning area, which allows the city to have a say in existing proposed land uses in an area that would directly impact the city. The JJZA has a goal of trying to maintain the rural characteristics of the surrounding area of Vermillion while also allowing for some light development. Most of the development is directed towards areas close to city limits or areas that can be annexed into the city and served, eventually serviced with municipal infrastructure. Prior to the adoption of the JJZA, there were several general subdivisions outside of city limits, Rolling Hills Estates, Lowell Subdivision, Silers, Hillside Acres Ranch Estates, and the Chowsee subdivision. Current code allows for the development in these areas, or for single-family dwellings within these areas to be constructed, but only as a conditional use. What this amendment would basically do is take it from a conditional use to allowable use by moving it from a agriculturally zoned area to a rural residential area. The county and city planning commissions held joint public meeting on April 8, 2019, in which the affected property owners were invited to attend. Most of the questions at this meeting were regarding the rezoning process, allowable uses, and any changes to property taxes. Comments received at the meeting have been included in your packet, on the next page. Both of the commissions voted unanimously to recommend to their governing bodies to adopt the rezones. The city council is asked to consider approval of the first reading of the ordinance. Administration recommends approval. The second reading would have to take place at a joint meeting with the county commission, and the date that we've set aside for that is June 17th at 6:30 PM. And in addition to the maps that the county provided, there are also maps on display behind you that are, I think, a little better to kind of view the larger area as a whole, and then there are maps that zoom in on the particular areas in which these rezones would take place.
There's three areas here on the map, this being the golf course right here, just to the east, a little further east, and then, then he's got a larger map here, which shows the city limits right here, so this is the one parcel is pretty much just adjoining part of the city. The other one runs out about another half mile. And then that third one is further out east.
Counsel? Steve?
Mike, or James, if you were there too, at the commission meetings, was, were there discussions, maybe you can put up the map again, Mike? Was there any discussion of connecting all of those to allow for rural residential, you know, throughout Main Street extended?
Sure. So, the reason that these are not contiguous is because there are landowners who ask to be removed from, to remove their property from consideration. So even though we have, I should say, members of the public that have commented, you know, about why they do not want this to take place, they did not officially request to be removed from the zoning area, in which case, or unlike others who you'll see that gap in there.
What were the, what were the negative, what were the, why would people want not to have this? What were their rationale?
If, if they believe that, I shouldn't say if they believe, but sometimes there's a difference in opinion on if they're, on how heavily they're engaged in agriculture. Because if with this zone change, basically the agricultural activity would be kind of grandfathered in, but if they, you know, if something happened and there were, the property was sold and it wasn't used for agricultural purposes for a year, then they would no longer be able to conduct agricultural business on that property, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Sure. Go ahead.
We, I think we should go ahead with this, but I would, or hold it, but I really think that the second reading, we should talk to whoever it is about removing the names of people, I think that gives unfair bias where we're looking at property, zoning property, and it may be biased saying, I don't like this person or do like this person. So I think in the case, it should be addresses, locations, but not names.
Thank you, Rich. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. We have no old business, we'll move on to new business. Item 8A, request to close East Main Street from Plum, Plum Street to Walker Street from 6:55 PM to 9:45 PM on Thursday, June 6th through Saturday, June 8th, 2019, and Sunday, June 9th, 2019, from 3:55 PM to 6:45 PM for the South Dakota Shakespeare Festival. James?
Thank you. Representatives for the South Dakota Shakespeare Festival have submitted their request to close Main Street from Plum to Walker, Thursday through Saturday, June 6th through 8th, from 6:55 PM to 9:45 PM, and Sunday, June 9th, from 3:55 PM to 6:45 PM for the festival. They're also requesting the removal of parking on the north side of Main Street from Plum Street to Walker on June 4th through June 10th. The Main Street closing requests will provide the attendees with a safe accessibility to Prentice Park for the performances. The festival will also need to block the parking to allow for rehearsal of, and performances, and provide for backstage equipment related to the performance to move in and out in a safe manner. The street department will drop off no parking signs that week. The request also notes that the use of volunteers to stand by the barricades during the performances to quickly move them in the event emergency vehicles need to access the hospital. No resident, no residential access will be directly affected by this closure. The South Dakota Shakespeare Festival will provide cleanup throughout the day and security teams will conduct the cleanup nightly following the rehearsals and performances. The administration recommends that the city council approve this closure, again, Thursday through Saturday, June 6th through 8th, 6:55 to 9:45, Sunday, June 9th, from 3:55 to 6:45, as well as the placement of no parking signs on the north side of Main Street between Plum and Walker for the duration of the event and a little bit before and after June 4th through the 10th, 2019.
Thank you, James. Counsel, Tom?
We have the completed application form for this, it's signed and seems all to be proper, so I move approval.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item B, library board appointments. Based on the things that I heard from council folks, we had four applicants for two spots, and my recommendation would be to reappoint Gabrielle and Eric Young to the two positions. Is that all right? A motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Gabrielle Strauss and Eric Young will be appointed to the library board, and will you let them know? Don't believe we have any bid openings today, so, John, city manager's report?
Thank you. Annually for the last several years, we've done an informational session on the mosquito control practices that the city would, will be following in respective year. This year, that event will be at the National Garden Armory on Princeton Street. It's this Wednesday, May 22nd, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. You can stop by to learn about the product practices, the chemicals that we use, that sort of thing. Recently, last week or so, the city did receive notification from National Park Service that Vermillion's application to be a certified local government as it pertains to historic preservation was approved. That was something the Historic Preservation Commission made a recommendation to the city council on, and you did approve submitting that application, and it's been through the process at the state level and the federal level to recognize our community as a certified local government. Weather permitting, Prentice Plunge is scheduled to open this Saturday, May 25th, at 1:00 PM. Then at your seat this evening were two raffle notifications that we just stayed so we're into the minutes. Vermillion Rotary Club, they are selling $5 tickets. Up until their event on June 14th, they will be signing up to 1,000 tickets. They're going to be having a duck race. These are rubber ducks that will be sent down the slide and around the lazy river, and the first duck, the first couple ducks across are the prize winners. Proceeds from this raffle... The proceeds from this raffle will benefit the Community Connection Center, and there are three prizes valued at $125, $75, and $50. The second raffle request came in today, and that's the Heartland Humane Society, they will be selling $1 tickets, or tickets for $1 each, 12 tickets for $10, or 25 tickets for $20, and that's during their Taste and Tour Event on Saturday, June 1st of this year. They will be raffling 10 baskets worth a total of $750 in prizes, and the proceeds from this raffle go to veterinary expenses incurred by the Heartland Humane Society.
Thank you, John. Next up is invoices payable, does anyone have any questions for Mike? A motion and a second to pay our bills, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We don't have a consensus agenda tonight, so, Steve? Got a motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.